Good evening, everybody. Nice to see you all. Can we start out with an introduction from our interpreter, please?
Yes. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Andrea with the Community Language Cooperative. We're going to practice language justice today, and we're going to have simultaneous interpretation in English and in Spanish so that we can communicate in the language of our heart. Once we turn on the interpretation, if you're on Zoom, please make sure that you click the globe that is going to come up at the bottom of your screen and select your preferred language. Hola a todos. Soy Andrea con la Community Language Cooperative. Vamos a practicar la justicia del lenguaje el día de hoy, y tendremos interpretación simultánea en inglés y en español para que podamos comunicarnos en el idioma de nuestro corazón. Cuando aprendamos la interpretación, si estás en Zoom, por favor, dale clic al globo que va a aparecer en la parte inferior de tu pantalla y selecciona tu idioma. And host, we can start interpretation now.
Thank you, Andrea. All called order this work session of the Sheridan City Council for August 11th, 2025. We currently have just Councilmember Kelly missing. And tonight, we're going to talk about the South Metro Waste Characterization Study, which I'm really excited about because I'm kind of a dork sometimes.
Hello, Mayor. Hello, Council. Mel England, Sustainability Program Manager. So great to be here with you all tonight to go over the South Metro Waste Diversion Plan, which was originally kicked off in February of 2024. So it's been a while, been a long time coming. Just for context, South Metro, that means Sheridan, Inglewood, Littleton, and Centennial. This plan is, while we are going to go over it in study session tonight, it is also going to be coming for your vote tonight for adoption. And one thing I really want to note is that this plan is typical to most plans is non-binding. And any of the big ticket items, if adopted later on tonight, would have to come back to council for further review, further in depth of what that would exactly look like. Adopting of the plan really just helps give a blueprint for staff about the approval of next steps that we should look at for waste diversion in Sheridan.
Great.
The next part I'm reading.
Record that Councilmember Kelly has arrived, so we can really get going.
I mean, y'all started right on the next. Let's go. Dallas still won't be shaking.
Nope.
Oh, the next part I'm reading because there's a lot of acronyms and I will forget. So this plan was fully funded by the Colorado Circular Communities or C3 Enterprise. It's a statewide program dedicated to supporting Colorado communities, businesses, nonprofits, schools, institutions of higher learning, and tribes to advance the state's transition to a circular economy. Technical assistance provided to communities through Colorado is aligned with the C3's enterprise mission of supporting Colorado's path to circularity. Technical support is provided by the C3 Outreach Team and the technical assistance staff, and a team of contracted subject matter experts led by STEPS, and that stands for Strategic Technical Expertise for the Public Sector. I hope you understand now why I read all of that. So here today from STEPS, we have Helen Lee, the project manager from Senior Consultant at RRS. We have Randy Mormon. He's the Director of Community Campaigns at EcoCycle. And we're also joined here by Joelle from EcoCycle, and she's an analyst there. So without further ado, I'm going to pass it over to the true experts, and I'll be here at the end.
Thanks, Mel.
You, Mel? Mayor Albedo Fleur, members of council, thank you so much for having us here today to talk about Sheridan's Waste Diversion Plan. Like you, Mayor, I'm also a dork of trash, so love to always talk about it. So tonight, we'll be covering the mission behind the plan, how it was developed, who we engaged, what we've learned from our waste composition study, and the actions that we identify, both on a regional level and city-specific to Sheridan. And like Mel said, what you're going to be hearing from us today is a plan that serves as a blueprint for the next 10 years to advance waste reduction and diversion in the city. Again, prior to implementation, any strategies that we discussed today, we'll have to come back for council. For example, if there's an ordinance or code discussion, we'll have to come back for you with the language. But again, this plan provides a way for the cities to have a prioritized list of activities and action items that they can focus on. So the South Metro region set an ambitious goal for this project to transition to a more equitable, data-driven system focused on waste reduction and diversion guided by best practices. And a core component of this effort was gathering regional-specific data through a detailed waste composition study. I'll tell you more about that, to inform some of our meaningful strategies. We also conducted a number of stakeholder engagement activities, and we heard from most of your residents that they overwhelmingly support efforts to increase recycling and composting access in the region. The development of this plan involved a very comprehensive baseline assessment, a two-season waste composition and generation study, a very robust stakeholder engagement. And in over, in total, we reached over 43,500 community interactions within the region, and we engaged with local haulers, we spoke with industry stakeholders, we mailed information to your residents, and conducted a regional survey in both English and Spanish. We held three focus groups with multifamily residents, we spoke with disadvantaged communities and businesses, and we also trained with the resident champions in recycling, launched a dedicated website, and also engaged with social media. We're also proud to support and host a waste summit earlier this year where we spoke with elected officials on our learnings. And I actually like to acknowledge and thank the Mayor, Bader Flur, Mayor Pro Tem Kelly, Councilmember Singh, and Whitaker, who were also in attendance of that waste summit. So thank you all for being there and giving us your input. Next, please. So as mentioned earlier, we're really committed to finding a data-driven plan. And so to support this, we did a waste composition study, and what that means is we sorted over 10,000 pounds of trash and recyclables. And what we found was that the region currently recycles only 15% of its waste. And so naturally, we're at 32%, so we need, we have some work to do. And so looking ahead, South Metro is projected to generate over 260,000 tons of waste annually by 2035. And to put that into context, that's like 20 football fields, 10 feet high every single year. It's a lot of waste. So the waste composition study also revealed that approximately 78% of the material that we currently send to landfills can be recovered through a combination of existing programs, expanding recycling and composting services, also specialized collection efforts. So these are commodities with a value that we're throwing away. There's revenues, there's opportunities that we are not capturing at this time. And what we also learned is that nearly half of the residential waste generated in South Metro are composed of organic waste, so yard waste, food waste, and other compostables, almost half of what we throw away. Next, please. We want to call out the state's Producer Responsibility Program. This is also sometimes referred to as EPR. And this law is something Randy's going to tell us a little bit more too, but this law will have a significant impact on how communities provide recycling to residents starting in 2026. So in a nutshell, this law requires all producers of products sold in Colorado with packaging and paper to fund a statewide recycling system. And starting in 2026, the Producer Responsibility Organization, the Circular Action Alliance, that organization will reimburse service providers to cover 100% of eligible net costs associated with recycling covered materials. So that means, starting 2026, residents in Colorado will be able to get free, essentially free recycling. And that will be covering cardboard, aluminum, glass, metal, and plastic, typically what we go put in the blue recycling bin. So today, we're going to discuss with you some recommendations that Sheridan could leverage this reimbursement. I will like to point out that CAA, the organization that is going to be handling the reimbursement, they are finalizing their implementation plan with the state. But again, we recommend the region to stay monitoring and engaging for this funding that's to come. So when selecting strategies for this action plan, we use a clear set of criteria to guide our recommendations. We focused on strategies that have been successful in other communities, whether it's in Colorado or across the country, show strong potential to increase waste diversion, and had high-to-medium levels of support from stakeholders, including like the officials when we spoke with you at the waste summit. We also prioritize actions that could expand access to service and advance equity across the region. So we're going to first talk about the regional strategies. Three strategies were selective, selected collectively by all the four cities as priorities, and it was evaluated for diversion as well as fiscal impact. So first, establishing the regional recycling drop-off centers. This was identified as a critical need through both focus groups. We heard this a ton of times in the surveys, especially for residents with those without access to curbside recycling. And in fact, the nearest drop-off center to the region are located in Aurora and Orvada. Recycling drop-off centers provide very convenient ways for residents who may not have access or maybe even the greatest access of recycling. We often see sometimes there's multifamily properties that might not have the greatest access for recycling. So drop-off centers can support greater access as well as surges in recyclable materials. Next, please. So second, improving access to organics recycling. This includes food scraps, yard waste, and other compostable materials. I mentioned earlier that almost half of the waste generated by residents in South Metro are organic waste. And so what this strategy is talking about is supporting expanding infrastructure, including a large-scale organics processing facility that can accept more than yard waste. So here in Sheridan, A1 Organics operates a facility that accepts yard waste for composting. And there are also smaller-scale food waste drop-off centers available throughout South Metro. But as we divert more organic waste, our processing capacity will also need to grow. And what we're not recommending is for you all to, you know, purchase a facility or anything like that, but we do believe that public-private partnerships and supporting industries for these facilities will be important as we grow and accept more materials. Third, thank you. Supporting recycling and composting for multifamily and commercial properties is so essential. And Sheridan, one of the highest multifamily housing percentages in South Metro, and also over 400 employer firms, we know that having good access to multifamily and commercial recycling and composting will be a very important, significant mover. Next, please. So moving into the city-specific strategies, there are nine strategies that we like to go over for Sheridan. I'm going to be covering some of them with Randy. So the first one is the, thank you, is At Your Door Collections for Household Hazardous Waste and Electronics Program. So what this is, it's a program that's currently in Inglewood, Littleton, and Centennial right now. They basically have a system where residents can call and schedule a pickup. So if I have maybe batteries, paint, chemicals in my garage or attic that I want to get rid of with a very small co-pay, the residents can schedule it, the hauler comes to your door and set your door and collects it for safe disposal. So those cities that are currently participating in this program, they do it through a partnership with Semswell and Waste Management, because a lot of these materials, we don't want it going down to our water or anything like that. So the next item, Randy's gonna speak for me. Thanks.
Thanks, Helen. Can we go to the next slide? Again, I'm Randy Mormon with EcoCycle, and great to be with you today. Going to talk briefly about, a little more about producer responsibility and specifically what Sheridan can do now to get ready. So as Helen said, that producer responsibility will start implementation in the state in 2026, and that will fully fund recycling services for both single-family and multifamily residences. It's good, they're going to start with communities that have municipally-run programs. So think of Denver and Longmont, who have their own trucks, but also organized hauling contracts like Sheridan. And so this fall, Circular Action Alliance will be putting out a request for reimbursement. And so the city will need to respond to that request this fall to get in line for that funding. There are additionally several policies that I wanted to cover, and one of them is equal space ordinance, and I'm going to have a whole slide to in a few minutes. But I also want to talk about your hauler licensing ordinance, so what things you might want to do to update that, to get that ready. So one thing to consider is to require haulers to report their data on the recycled tons collected. This is really going to help the Producer Responsibility Organization know how much recycling is being collected in Sheridan, and then measure the effectiveness of the program over time. So adding that requirement that your haulers report data along with their, when they're doing their licensing with you. Two other requirements to consider are thinking about the haulers that aren't part of your contract and thinking about in their licensing that requiring them to bundle in recycling. Right now, some of them offer recycling, and we know from our survey that 18% of Sheridan residents reported that the hauler is not currently offering them recycling. So this is really about closing that gap. And so it would require those haulers in their licensing to, in their agreements with you through their licensing, is that they will bundle in recycling. And so that means that when they go out to offer any services to residents, they have to include recycling. It's not an opt-in. It's not something that resident has to choose to get into or pay extra for. It's part of the basic service that the hauler is providing to your residents. So it really will level the playing field, because most of your residents are in your contract, and they're already getting that. So this ensures that everyone else outside the contract also gets that. And then, secondly, to consider requiring them to do pay-as-you-throw or volume-based pricing, again, just like you have in your contract, but require those other haulers to do the same thing. So that again, everyone will have those options of three carts, small, medium, and large, and will be incentivized to recycle more under that kind of program that can go citywide. With that, I will turn it back to Helen.
We'll have Randy back in a second. Next, please. All right. So next up is implementing food scrap curbside for single-family. By 2035, in Sheridan, we estimate that approximately 20% of the total waste generated is food scrap or other compostables. And so having kind of a dedicated curbside item for food scraps would be really important. You can bundle it, so you can co-collect food and yard waste so that it's in one container. Some communities also phase it in by having food scraps voluntarily dropped off at these drop-off centers that I touched on. There's 11 of them in South Metro. The infrastructure already exists. So there's a lot of different ways to get residents to start food waste composting. And I know we're already doing that here in Sheridan with the partnership. So it's really great that you guys are leading the charge there. Next, please. So on the other side of the coin is yard waste in the organics world, another significant portion of the waste stream. Currently, Sheridan collects yard debris curbside with Republic, but it is disposed of at the landfill. So we encourage the city to work with the current Hall of Republic services to transition the materials that they're already collecting to go to a compost facility if possible. That would really move the needle. And again, right here in Sheridan, A1 Organics is accepting and processing yard waste. To you, Randy.
All right. So what is an equal space ordinance? Let's go to the next slide. Thank you. So this has to do with any commercial building. And since 40% of your households in Sheridan are multifamily, and we've got that producer responsibility coming online to pay for recycling there, we want to make sure that those buildings are able to have easy access to recycling. And so equal space ordinance has to do with new builds, and it requires them that the infrastructure is there for both recycling and trash, not just trash. So think of things like enclosures, receptacle shoots, staging areas, collection rooms, those kind of things that are in those big commercial buildings to make sure that we've got space for both trash and recycling. We have several cities already that have these types of ordinances that we can point to, for example. So Superior, Broomfield, and Fort Collins have similar ordinances that you can look at as examples. Next slide. The last thing I'm going to speak to you about then is something very important and close to my heart is working on community outreach and engagement. I always talk about how you can't move the needle in recycling with just education alone, but when you're implementing new programs and policies, you have to have that educational component to be successful. So they really need to go hand in hand. And, you know, we looked at through our community engagement with this project, which included focus groups and surveys, we found that the biggest barrier to recycling in Sheridan was just a lack of knowledge of what to put in the bin. And when we did our waste composition study, we found that Sheridan had one of the highest rates of contamination in recycling in the region, which was 34%. So we need to get at that, of some more educational learning about what to put in the bin and what not to put in there. So to overcome this, we really recommend the city do some work with existing community groups and provide education on the why and how to recycle. And then we firmly believe in a peer-to-peer education model. And so at EcoCycle, we have over 50 years of experience doing this, and we have found that the most effective way is neighbors talking to neighbors, residents talking to residents, coworkers talking to coworkers, and sharing information. And so we start with hosting Train the Trainer. So we do a training, and so folks get caught up on what are the guidelines, why are the guidelines the way they are, and then they go out and share that knowledge with the people they know in the community. And we found that to be extremely helpful and effective. So additionally, city staff and volunteers, like these types of resident champions I was just talking about, can table at community events, distribute resources, answer questions, be available for that. And then finally, through this project, we've set up the South Metro Waste Diversion website. So we hope that that can be a continual resource of putting information for residents there and frequently ask questions so that people have easy access to that on the internet.
Great. Next, please. So lastly, wrapping up my final strategy here, wanted to talk about exploring business waste diversion grants. And we know Sheridan is very, you know, pro-supporting businesses, and in the past, they have supported with additional grants like the polystyrene grant. And so the city can look for opportunities for incentives or grants to support businesses with waste diversion. The EPR law that we mentioned earlier today, in future years, they are looking at potential funding opportunities for schools, hospitality, and other sectors as well. So again, just continuing to stay engaged in that will be very helpful again as the bill progresses. Sorry, not the bill, the law. Mel, if you want to close it up for us?
Yes, next slide, please. Before I go into next steps, I also want to just take a moment to really shine light on how incredible Sheridan has already done in the waste diversion category. Helen told me a city council member at another community was like, we have to get on this, we have to catch up to Sheridan. And I was like, heck, yes. And then also, like, we have done so much already that this is so extra exciting for me to bring this to Sheridan. But for our next steps, so we have a resolution that will come in front of you all tonight to vote on, to adopt this plan. And then obviously, there are three regional goals that we have within this plan, and all four cities are going to meet regularly, depending on the feedback that we get from council to keep trying to get these chugging along and moving forward. And then we're going to continue to look for grants to make these projects happen. A little birdie told me that the state is really happy with the way that this diversion plan and the whole engagement has happened, and that they would really love to see future grants from all four cities to advance the work that's within here. So with that, we're going to open it up to any questions or anything you all may have. But thank you so much for your time and your commitment to this.
Yeah, thank you all. We really appreciate this. It's really, it's great to have so many, like, real concrete next steps that we can follow and really very reachable, you know, definitely within what we can handle, I think. So. What do you have questions? I had another mayor say to me, well, A1 Organics can't take all that yard waste from the whole South Metro area. I won't name names.
I think they would disagree, because I don't want to speak for them.
Yeah, I mean, I would think, you know, at some point, the market would grow to meet the demand, right? I mean, like, if Sheridan started sending our yard waste to A1, they might be like, oh, we need a bigger facility or we need a second facility or.
And they did actually expand, I want to say, last year, two years ago-ish. They expanded their site to be even bigger. So, yeah. If you've never seen A1 Organics in Sheridan, I highly recommend. It's a big, big, big site.
Whoa. Okay. There are questions from people? You got one? Go ahead.
So talking with some of my neighbors, they don't, they haven't jumped on the recycling kick yet, even though it's offered to them. I don't know if that's an educational piece. We just need to really get out there and hammer to them. Or maybe the educational piece on getting them on what to put in there. I don't know. I just see my neighbors not utilizing that, and I don't know how to engage with them to get that moving forward.
Yeah, I would love to have mine taken, then, the other professionals in the room on this. But I think it's a mix of both of education on what should go in there, and then also building that trust with folks who have really felt like they lost it. I know for Inglewood and Sheridan the past, well, for Inglewood, two years, for Sheridan the last one, we did tours at Waste Management's recycling facility. And I will say the before and after, and we've had many people that were very wary of recycling going, and then after, they're like, oh, my gosh, I did not know that infrastructure was there. You can tell they're much more engaged. So I think lifting that veil that, yes, it is getting recycling. These companies will not spend millions and millions of dollars on infrastructure to just throw it away. But I don't know if Randy or Helen want to add?
No, I think, Mel, you did a really good explanation. I think education is key, as I said earlier. And doing it throughout the whole community, you know, especially with kids, because then kids go home and tell their parents, they say, hey, we should be recycling. And we see a lot more homes recycle, as you know, that kind of effect. So I think really starting young and also continuing to do that, that peer-to-peer education that I talked about can be very effective, because, you know, it's that community-based social marketing kind of concept. And we do a lot of things like with stickers and things, just to identify, hey, I'm recycling, shouldn't you? And, you know, just kind of that catch on, how do you get the community to realize this is a thing we do here, right? And it's part of our culture. And so it's really that culture-building piece.
I just want to recognize also that I feel like Sheridan is really leading, you know, with practice. There's recycling containers in this building, which I was so pleased to see. You know, you don't see that for every government building in Colorado. So again, you know, the peer-to-peer education really helps. I'll say that we created as part of this project, the waste toolkit, education toolkit in both English and Spanish. And so it tells you kind of why we recycle, what can you recycle. And so those are resources that we'll have for staff and for the website. But again, it's just continuous education, because people come in and out of Sheridan and Colorado, and you always have to teach new people coming in. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Anthony, before you, are you asking on the same thing?
No.
Okay, before you ask, can I just tag on one more? Pissed. Thank you, Anthony. My understanding, maybe one of you guys can speak to this, is that the state is also going to be pushing out fairly significant education programs as part of everything that they'll be launching next year as well. Maybe you guys could just touch on that a little bit to make council aware?
Yes, that is correct. So part of producer responsibility in the state law is that the Producer Responsibility Organization has to provide education for the state. And so that is part of when, when you as a city put in your request for reimbursement, you can put in there that you want reimbursement for education, and you can contract with somebody to do that. you can put in there that you want reimbursement for education and you can contract with somebody to do that education. You know, your hauler is doing some of that. You can, you know, work with Mel to see if there's different ways that the city can be involved in doing that. So that's, that's an opportunity there to go to the state and say, hey, we want to do more. And you can put that in your request for reimbursement too.
I was wondering if automotive was included in hazardous waste?
Yeah, automotive fluids and filters and oil, yes. Those materials are part of the waste characterization that we saw. We also saw some tires. So tho- those materials are not covered by EPR, but finding ways to get those materials safely disposed and kind of the at-your-door collection of household hazardous waste again with paint, batteries, electronics, oil filters, et cetera. That would be a really helpful way to get that collected safely.
Any more questions? Anybody on staff have questions?
I don't unless anybody else on staff had something. My, my other follow-up or suggestion was this is the council is to, as I asked you at our previous meeting, to start looking at your homework on goal setting and things like that. Obviously, there's some nice suggestions towards some goals that we could. What I would find, I think, helpful in our discussion when we do goal setting is to maybe look through these and see what in there and what, how, help us maybe prioritize. But because we'd like to do, you know, probably most of them, but we're, again, we're, we only got one Mel. And, and so we, we'll, we'll, you know, need some help maybe with, with council on prioritizing. We'd like to really see you focus on this, this, this. We're not lose sight of the big picture and everything else. But then, you know, specifically where would you like to see, and, you know, especially with the Sheridan specific goals that are in there, what would you like to see rise to the top for us to focus on to begin with? So any prioritization you might have would be helpful.
Yeah.
Mayor, if you don't mind, if I could add one thing that I forgot actually. I know for the council members that join the Waste Summit, you already know this really awesome information. But in case you didn't, it is in the plan. But Sheridan is the only community out of the four that has a single hauler contract. And from the data that they pulled, Sheridan residents are paying far less than the other residents in the other communities. And I really just want to highlight that, that it is proving to be an economical program for Sheridan. So hats off for that one. I just wanted to make sure that was known.
And they've been enjoying those low rates for so long now too.
As a little investment, I'm jealous.
And it's, it's nice to see that happen because however many years ago it's been now, eleven years ago, when we were preaching that, that you'll see savings, that you'll see these kind of things. And to see it, you know, coming to fruition and, and that we weren't, we weren't just blowing sunshine at people. It's really gonna, it's really gonna help out and help save you money. It's, it's very satisfying.
Okay. Well, you've given us so much to work with. I really appreciate it and thank you all for being here.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Okay. Devin, do you want to do a review of agenda items for tonight?
Sure, Mayor. Hold on, let me switch over where we are. Thank you guys for coming tonight. Appreciate that. Okay, we have a rather short agenda with our regular meeting. We have two action items, one of which is the resolution approving the South Metro Waste Diversion Plan that we just reviewed. So hopefully you don't have any further questions. The second resolution we have in front of you tonight is designating the Littleton Independent as the official newspaper for our publications. The Inglewood Herald has gone out of operation. I don't know if it's out of existence. I don't know. They're just not operating anymore. So we have to have a designated local paper as the place where we post our public information, our public notices. So we'll need to have this resolution designated, excuse me, Littleton Independent as part of that. And then we won't do it tonight, but we'll follow up with some discussion later on about possibly looking at changes to the way that we provide our public notices. A lot of cities are moving as more and more regular traditional newspapers go away. Cities are looking at alternatives for how do we notify the public when we have public carings? When we have other things that we are required to notice the public about? And what's the most efficient and effective way to do that and have some discussions with council about that? And then tonight, we do have a special SRA meeting. So we, I don't want to bore you and kill you with the details as to why we have to do this necessarily. But we've been working on with, okay, let me step back. This gets very complex.
Go ahead and, go ahead and bore us.
Let me step back. So with the, the SRA has issued bonds, as you guys are all aware of. Series A bonds, series B bonds, series C bonds, C bonds. Really, the A and B bonds are the only bonds that are ever going to be paid on. The A bonds and the B bonds are secured by letters of credit as part of the reimbursement agreement that was originally put in place between the city, wine garden and US Bank. So one way of thinking about the letters of credit is they provide the liquidity for moving the money between the entities for the SRA, for the bank, for JP Morgan, when they get involved with it. And a lot of this is required or it got more complicated when we refinanced the bonds. So there's been a number of amendments to the original reimbursement agreement that says how this is all set up. This will tonight be asking you to do a sixth amendment to this original agreement that was there, that all it really does is extend the, we extend the expiration date on those letters of credit. So those letters of credit are, I think, generally set them up for about like two years or so. And we need to keep those, pushing those out. So tonight is, we're just asking you to extend the dates on the letters of credits for the A bonds and the B bonds. The C bonds, nobody's even worrying about. So the A bonds and the B bonds, extending the date out on those letters of credit. And that's a, that's it really. The reason we had to do this is a special meeting and rather than our regularly scheduled meeting on this, is that we've been working on putting these extensions onto the letters of credit since May of this year. We got them on a Friday, a little over a week ago. And we're informed by the bank that we needed to have the approved and in place and back to them a week later. Well, we don't work that way. And I can't sign it, the mayor can't sign it until you as a body say, yes, we're okay and pass a resolution saying we will extend the date on the LOCs. So finally, some of the guys at JP Morgan said, oh, yeah, okay, ding. Well, we'll work with internally to be able to notice the bondholders and make basically pay. But I don't even want to, I don't even want them to tell me what they had to do. Just do it and get the, get the, get the notices, arrangement for the notices smoothed over with their folks. So they have done that. We passed this tonight and I'll send it to them first thing in the morning. And then by the end of this week, then we should be all done with that. So I apologize, we had to have a special meeting. I anticipated doing it at our regular meeting, at our second meeting in August here and was informed that, well, I'm not gonna, you're, we're working with three or four different financial institutions. One of them said, we need it tomorrow. And this is as quick as I told them we could get it done. Are there any questions about the LOCs or what they are and why we need to extend the dates on those? Okay.
I appreciate you negotiating for an actual.
And I think Wendy will be online. Yeah, no, no worries. I think Wendy will be online if Wendy, Wendy is, is online now. I asked her to be on there and I appreciate Wendy being there in case you guys had any more technical than that. Because that's about as, that's about as deep as I go on those. And but Wendy could go deeper if you guys really wanted to.
Great.
That's it on that, Mayor.
Okay. Well, we got time if you want to do.
I got a really brief manager's report. I don't have a lot to report on tonight. I'll spend a little bit of time. First off, we had National Night Out last week. Thought it went off really well and wanted to thank the staff that was involved with that. And I know the chief will probably go over and, and add a little bit more in his comments here. So I won't go into it too much, but just thought it was a great event. Appreciated it and we got some good weather out there and a nice turnout. So it was a good event. I've had recent meetings, I've been meeting with the Colorado Soccer Foundation. They're looking at doing a facility here in Sheridan. The Colorado Soccer Foundation is a nonprofit that works hard at bringing soccer to disadvantaged kids, kids that maybe can't afford to play on a regular club and those kinds of things like that. So they have a facility in Aurora that I went and toured last week. Fantastic facility they have out there and they're looking at doing one here in Sheridan using some of the school district land. And they're working with the school district right now on a long-term lease for some property over there to be able to do that. Very exciting. They want to come and talk to you about it and we'll find some time between now and the end of the year. It's still a little ways out for them to be able to do that. They still have, like I said, are negotiating a lease with the school district. But I'll invite them into a work session and you, they can do a little presentation and see what is. And it's very exciting. They've done some, a pilot program here in Sheridan over the summer and they had a lot of kids come out. They were employing some people from Sheridan Rising to act as instructors and, and help to coordinate with what was going on out there. So it's very exciting and it would be a nice partnership, I think, between the city and the school district and Colorado Soccer Foundation on a, on a future facility. So did that last week. I also had breakfast with the Denver Fire Chief and we talked about a number of things Sheridan. And I'm going to pass this out.
Annual report from Denver Fire and it has some sections in here that we'll go over that are Sheridan-specific.
And I'm sorry, I didn't make more for everybody or put this up on the screen. My apologies. So I won't spend a lot on time on this, mostly just leave it with you as council to take a look at this. Of course, Chief Fulton said he'd be happy to come in and meet with council and talk about any of this anytime that you would like. But as you can see, it provides some rather high-level stuff with mission statements, visions and values. But if you go into like the, it's going to be the second, third, I think the fourth page says overview of 2024 calls. These are specific to Sheridan and kind of breaks it down by call types. We have auto EMS, fire, fire structure, fire other, hazmat, hazmat, others and tech. I'm not sure what tech is. But the total calls, I asked the chief, I said, for our total call volume, how does that kind of compare to other fire stations in the metro area? He said, it's a little low. So this would be maybe not like one of the busiest stations that they have that they operate. But it's very much within the capabilities of a station this size. One of the things he called out is that although it's not a lot, nine hazmat responses, he said, was a little high actually for somebody, for something, a station like this, of this size. And, you know, I don't know, and he didn't know specifically what that, why that is. Although, you know, we have a concentration of industrial properties that could have lent to that. We have a railroad that runs through and a spur that comes into the town that does things. We have two major highways and we have a lot of automobile services here in Sheridan. So that could be some of what happens with why we've had a relatively higher number of hazmat responses here in Sheridan. And I don't have, he didn't have at the time a historical look at that. So that might be interesting just to see a historical look and see what that is. But the good thing of that is that we have through our contract with Denver Fire, probably one of the most premier hazmat response units that you can bring to any incident for practically anywhere in the country comparing with. So very, very highly experienced hazardous material responses from the fire department for when we need them. So that's good and reassuring. The next page talks a little bit about what do we have apparatus here in Sheridan? So the, the E twenty-eight, thirty-six and thirty-seven, those are engines. So we have three engines here at our firehouse and then the T twenty-eight, T thirty-eight, those are trucks. So service trucks that are part of that. And then you can see how many times those have got called out over the last year there as well. If you flip the next page, if you haven't met Captain McGraw, Brent is a great guy. Happy to show you around the firehouse anytime if you haven't met Brent before. I think it's been a while. I know he's come and talked to council before. It's been a little while since we've had this. Maybe we'll see if Brent would, would be willing to come and talk to council a little bit what's going on with the, the firehouse right now. But Brent's been with us, oh, gosh, quite some time now. So it's very nice to have that level of stability because Denver Fire has a, a regular operation of cycling people through their firehouses to give people different experiences, different levels of experience, different people, you know, just so they don't get bored doing the same thing over and they cycle people through. But Brent has been a constant here and that's been very reassuring to have his leadership here in Sheridan throughout the time.
It might be good for the new council so they understand.
Yeah, I was thinking that too, Mayor. A lot of the rest of this, I'll let you just kind of look at it. One of the things though, that does affect everybody that lives in Sheridan is the accreditation of the fire department. And they are, have been looking at, what am I trying to say? Re-acquiring or re-upping their accreditation as a fire department. What that does is when they become accredited, it helps improves their ISO, which are insurance types of ratings that help or directly affect if you go and look to get property insurance for your house, say, or homeowner's insurance, they look at those ISO ratings for the fire department, the services, either the neighborhood that you're in or, you know, that. And so it can affect the rates that you pay for homeowner's insurance and things like that. So that's always good to have a very high rating and we do through Denver Fire and with their accreditation program. Gosh, I think that's, I'm going to leave it at that. Mayor, a lot of the other stuff is here is if council just kind of wants to go through it, it's more general to overall department rather than to Sheridan specific. And that's what I've got, Mayor.
Wow. Yeah. Light report.
But I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have about anything.
Anybody have any questions?
I did drive by last night and, and it was the first time that I've seen the clock at night. It's bright. It really lights it up there. It's cool. It looks really good. Yeah.
Nice. Yeah. I guess we'll all see it more as we get further into the fall and the winter, right?
Yeah, I think tonight or sometime this week is the last eight o'clock sunset and it's going to start getting earlier and earlier. So.
Great. Okay. Well, do we have anything else we want to cover now? We want to just take a break, get some time.
Staff, do you guys have anything that you want? Chief, you want to do that? Sure.
We do our staff reports now. Good.
Perfect. I'll kick us off. Just a quick election update, nomination petitions are currently circulating. If you're interested in still running, there's time to get your nomination petition in. So come see me and we can do that. And that's all I got.
Good.
Short and sweet.
Simple. Do you bring anything to talk about, Jeff? Oh, oh my gosh, we're getting called on.
No. Yeah. If you haven't received it already, you'll soon be receiving our, the update done by our firm on all the legislation from the 2025 session. And you may have seen in the paper, they're going to have a special session of the general assembly here because they're a billion dollars in the hole. And so I've been telling all of our clients, you know, if we've received any grant money, it, it's best be spent. Because if it's not spent, it'll get clawed back in the special session. Because if it's not spent, it'll get clawed back in the special session. So yeah, isn't that a charitable topic?
I just saw something today. I don't know if I can chime in here, but it just something about the um federal grants for solar. And I saw we had a little ad almost on our reader board about the gain program. I thought that was one of the ones they're gonna try to take back. So I'm like, oh.
Various grants associated with the land use mandates that we've had in the last couple of years.
Too. Yeah, we wanted to keep their hands off the Prop one twenty-three money, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Yeah, we 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 have some plans. We'd like some of the one twenty-three money, but I don't know if it's gonna be there.
Hmm. All right. Well, I guess Chief, if you've got anything you want to share with us.
Just real quick, yeah. Again, thanks for coming to National Night Out, everybody that showed up. Um, good time and they really enjoyed seeing canine bones as usual. So it's a highlight. Um, today we did a backpack giveaway at Port Logan Northgate. Uh, thanks to Precious Child. Um, it's a nonprofit organization that helps out. I have to fill out a bunch of information about uh our children and different things. But uh they gave us a hundred and fifty backpacks. So we were able to give um every kid that wanted one from Port Logan Northgate. And then we had some leftover, took them over to the high school. So um they're very thankful and happy today. And we'll be doing a ice cream social with them for one of their back-to-school nights. We're gonna buy some ice cream and pass it out um for them as well. So.
Is it for Fort Logan Northgate?
That's gonna be at Fort Logan Northgate. Yes, we're focusing on them. We kind of move around each year. So um, that's who where that will be. And then just wanted to talk briefly about some of the proactive police work. You might have seen on social media, some of the things that Wendy's been posting for us. Um, a couple of the stops that ended up with the officers getting some drugs and guns and different things off the street. Our officers are doing that almost every day. They're they're making arrests. Um, some of them are just really, really good at it. And it was just funny that yesterday, my wife and I were driving through Sheridan, doing some of our errands. And as we drove by um Federal and Hampton, we saw Officer McClay making a stop checking um some license plates and doing different things with somebody. We went to Costco, then we came back down Oxford. There he is stopping on, there's a motorcycle that he stopped that was driving too fast. But um, I am very, very proud of the police work that they do. I know I don't always brag about that. I talk about a lot of the community things that we do because I think they're both really, really important. But you um, you all, as far as our city, we are very lucky for the officers that we have and the competency that they have and the work that they do and treating people professionally and um getting things done and keeping our city safe. We talked about some of the other cities right next to us and some of the things that we see and you don't see them in Sheridan. We don't have a lot of people um on the side of the roads asking for money or doing things. We help them get resources, do all we can with them. But the work that they do, and I was thanking some of the officers today and they thank me for supporting them. But that thank is really to all of you and this city. Because if we didn't have the support and I had pressure on me saying, you know, we can't do this, we certain things, I couldn't be so be so supportive of all them. So the thanks is to all of you. And I always think of the response times for our officers in Sheridan compared to even at my house right next door in Denver. Um, I've had to call Denver a couple of times and of course I came from there right. But the response time sometimes is very, very long. And here we have our officers all the time. So I know we are very expensive and the biggest part of the budget for the city. But I really do believe we are keeping our city safe and all of our citizens safe and all those thousands and thousands of people that travel through here. So just want to take a minute tonight to highlight the officers and the great work they do because of the support from all of you. So thank you.
Thanks, Chief. I think we, I'm sure we all echo that back to you, you know, to thank the all the officers because we know what a great job you do and you know, we hear it from the residents and we hear that they want more of the same. You know, they want more police. We don't hear people saying, hey, cut back the police in Sheridan. So you know, they appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, well, let's take a little break. We'll adjourn this meeting. It's six fifty-three PM and we'll come back at seven for the regular meeting.
Ms. Andrea, can we have an introduction when you are ready?
Yes. Hi, everybody. I'm Andrea with the Community Language Cooperative. We're going to be practicing language justice and we're going to have simultaneous interpretation in English and in Spanish. Once we turn on the interpretation, you're going to see a globe at the bottom of your screen. If you're on Zoom, where you're going to click and select your preferred language. Hola a todos. Soy Andrea con la Community Language Cooperative. Vamos a practicar la justicia del lenguaje y vamos a tener interpretación simultánea en inglés y en español para que podamos comunicarnos en el idioma de nuestro corazón. Cuando aprendamos la interpretación, si estás en Zoom, vas a ver un globo que va a aparecer en la parte inferior de tu pantalla donde vas a poder seleccionar tu idioma. And how's we can start interpretation now?
Thank you, Andrea. I'll call to order this regular meeting of the Sheridan City Council for August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The time is seven oh one PM. Can we have roll call, please? We have all council members present. Will everyone please rise for the invocation followed by the pledge of allegiance?
Creator and sustainer of all that is or ever will be, accept our thanks for this day and its blessings. We ask that you guide and direct us and our actions. Grant that each of us may feel our responsibility to our community, our country, and indeed to all the countries and peoples. Bless our fellowship today in your service. Amen.
I pledge allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have any changes to the agenda?
No changes to the agenda, Madam Mayor.
Great. Okay, um usually we would have staff reports. We have anything additional from staff that you thought of that you want to report tonight?
Nothing at this time for me.
I don't see any. All right, we'll move on to the minutes then. Minutes of the regular city council meeting of July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. I have a motion from Councilmember Kelly and a second from Councilmember Stang. Any discussion on the minutes? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. Then we have the consent agenda, the approval of disbursements, authorized disbursements that have been or will be made from July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five in the amount of six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-one cents per the referenced and attached transfer of funds. There's a motion from Councilmember Camacho and a second Councilmember Moreno. Any questions or discussion on the disbursements? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. Next tonight, we have items for individual consideration. Um, we do not have any ordinances tonight. We have two resolutions. We have resolution seventeen of twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Sheridan, Colorado approving the South Metro Waste Diversion Plan. I have a motion from Councilmember Whitaker and a second from Councilmember Kelly. Any discussion on the resolution seventeen? Just want to say thank you again and I really appreciate Mel, you working with all those consultants and getting us a really good set of goals. So I'm looking forward to it. All right, please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. Then we have resolution eighteen of twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the city council of the city of Sheridan designating the Littleton Independent as the official newspaper for publication of the city's legal documents and allowing for alternatives in the event of emergencies. I have a motion from Councilmember Stang and a second from Councilmember Moreno. Any discussion on resolution eighteen? Please cast your votes. Motion is approved unanimously. Next, we have mayor's choice. Um, I don't have too much, just um continue thinking about goals because we are gonna talk about those. I think um city manager said later this month at the other meeting, maybe?
Yeah, at our second meeting, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but whatever date that is.
Okay.
August twenty-fifth, thank you.
So keep brainstorming, make yourself a little cheat sheet if there's things you want us to talk about um potentially working on in the future. And then I was just gonna share something that I noticed this week. I bought a electric vehicle on Saturday and I was researching all the rebates, you know, finding everything out. And I was like, okay, let me look at the charger rebates. Somehow my neighborhood is the only one in Sheridan that doesn't have a rebate that's extended rebate. Like it's like the normal level, like all of the rest of Sheridan is in this like environmentally. You know, you know what? They came and talked to us that one time. It can do. I can't remember what they call it. Like environmental mitigation kind of area. For some reason, my neighborhood is outside of it. I was like, how did that happen? I guess I'm in a different census tract or something.
That's rough.
I know. I'm like, darn it. But anyway, it's interesting. And so it was, it was interesting to see that they have those resources though, where you can actually just put in your address. Um, the map will come up. It'll tell you which ones you're qualified for, you know, so they make it pretty easy. And and it's a pretty significant incentive for everybody else in Sheridan, everybody else outside. It's like up to twenty-three hundred dollars or something for the charger. So it's like basically a free charger. So anyway, there you can learn from my experience. That's all I had. Anybody have anything to share?
Turn your mic on, brother.
Yeah, I got your mic.
Hey Devon, on June night in Old Hampton, right in front of C M, CNN. CNN? CNN. There's three holes in this street. Why is that there? They've been saying that it's been there for years and they wondered if they were gonna fill them up, cover them or something because people have been tripping on it. Is yeah.
In the street or in the?
Yeah, it's on the street, right in front of their uh, their their shop.
In front of CNN Metals?
Right there, there's three holes in the middle of the street.
Huh.
Oh, like where people are crossing the street? You mean they're tripping?
Yeah, just right there in the middle of the street, right in front of their little uh shipping door. There's three holes.
I just can't see it in my head. I'll I'll look. I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but I'll find out.
Okay, thanks. Will you let me know?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
I ju- I just want to say uh the Sheridan High School back-to-school night, that was a a great event. I don't know if people saw some of my pictures on social media, me and Bumblebee was hanging out from the Transformers. Uh, went to the final movie in the park uh to see Minecraft. That was a, uh, that was really good turnout. Thanks, thanks to Wendy uh and staff. So that's all I have to share. So I mean, I don't think, I'm not sure we can really give you a temperature. I think that would be a very dangerous thing for us to do because zoning is a kind of quasi judicial matter. So, I mean, I can say I was part of that council that did the last comprehensive plan. And yeah, I mean, we wanted to improve the look of certain thoroughfares in Sheridan because we have industrial all over the place, right?
Yes.
So, you know, and auto shops all over the place. And so part of that was pulling it back and having it just in locations where we wanted that to continue, right? And so I, I don't want to get into your specific case because you might come back to us with the zoning and then I would be in hot water, right?
Totally fair.
So and Ari, you know, and Andrew who's here, you know, they're the ones who really can help you with that and talk about potential new sites within the city, which ones are within the zoning that you need.
Yeah.
Right? And then we have to kind of separate that as council. We can't talk about your specific case. We can talk kind of generally about what our vision for the city is and where we want things to be located. And we do that as part of that comprehensive plan process.
Understand. And I did try to keep my comments.
Yeah, I appreciate that, yeah.
So I, I just would, you know, where I think we're going to press forward to try to stay within the city. We have a little over forty-eight hundred unique customer names in our database from the last ten years. And we have a lot of people who not only count on us, but they just, they come and hand us their keys and they trust us. And so.
Yeah, I just would say, don't take it personally, you know, anything we've done in pass zoning, it certainly wasn't intended to like drive you out of the city. It's more that we have a desire to see us, see our city a certain way and to make it enjoyable for everyone. And what we had heard constituents, which is what we do, we listen to our constituents is that they wanted to see less of that on kind of our major thoroughfares.
I can certainly understand.
Yeah. But I don't know if staff, if you have anything else to add or if you. I mean, I know we're not required to respond to public.
No, Mary, I mean, you covered it pretty well. As far as a zoning issue, we have to be careful about discussing zoning in this kind of a forum with that. Come and meet with me, with Ari, with Andrew. We'll talk zoning until we're blue in the face. And everything about it and happy to do so. The council is just in an awkward position that if a zoning question regarding your property were to come to them in the future, they would be in an awkward position by having a discussion about that now with any specifics like that. But we're, we're happy to sit down with you, do whatever we can. We don't want to lose any of our existing businesses. And, and I would take a little bit of exception saying that this city, this council has never, I would say, done anything to try and push existing businesses out of the city. It's been trying to improve our infrastructure that surrounds them and those kind of things to make. Again, I, I think we, we are proud of our industrial areas and the services that they provide because in a lot of those areas, those services aren't anywhere else in the metro area. You will find them here and people come here for that. And we don't have any really objection with that. It's like, we'd like to see everything spruced up. We'd like to see, you know, the roads made better that service those industrial areas. We'd like to see the utilities that aren't in a lot of those areas put into those areas. And that's where our push has been. And that's where our land use code is set up with our, our ten-year plans is to try and encourage those kind of things. Not try and get rid of businesses and bring in other businesses, but to improve our existing conditions to make it better for our businesses that even stay in place and expand. That's one of the problems we have is that we have the businesses in place and some have wanted to expand and they can't. Right? So, and so I'm preaching to the choir.
We're your guy. If we had, you know, another.
But we're happy to set any time to, to meet with you. And, and like I said, you've been working with Ari. That's fantastic. We'll bring other staff. If you want to meet with us, just let me know. Happy to help.
That's all I can ask. That, that, yeah, and I have been here for both of the corners of federal and Hampton. The one that they said, oh, you'd have to raise it, you know, twelve feet or whatever.
Yeah, right.
The other one, they said they didn't want, you know, so we've, I've met with the guys over the last ten years, you know, a number of times, just take, trying to take a shot because
sure.
we're not the one that can take the, you know, little two garage doors. And yeah, no, we're, you know, we're, we deal eighteen to twenty BMWs a day. And so, yeah, we're a busy place. So, okay. I think that that sums it up. So I appreciate you for hearing me. Thank you. And I understand that no promises, but yeah, I will be meeting with you folks. So thank you. I appreciate it.
I hope you will. We want you to, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, anybody else who wants to speak to council tonight? Okay, I don't see anyone. So we'll adjourn this meeting at seven twenty P M. And we're going to move right into our special session of Sheridan Redevelopment Agency. So I will call to order the special meeting of the Sheridan Redevelopment Agency for August eleventh, twenty twenty-five. The time is seven twenty P M. We have all board members present. I guess we can mark that in here since we have to vote. We need, did you mark us all? Is that what you did? You're ahead of me.
Campus Roland.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we have two resolutions tonight. We have resolution two of twenty twenty-five. A resolution of the Sheridan Redevelopment Agency of the city of Sheridan, Colorado approving the Sixth Amendment to the reimbursement agreement, series twenty eleven A dash one. All right, I have a motion from board member Kelly and a second from board member Stang. Any discussion on resolution two? Please cast your votes. Motion is approved unanimously. And then we have resolution three of twenty twenty-five. A resolution of the Sheridan Redevelopment Agency of the city of Sheridan, Colorado approving the Sixth Amendment to the reimbursement agreement, series twenty eleven A two. I have a motion from board member Camacho and a second from board member Moreno. Any discussion on resolution three? Please cast your votes. That motion is approved unanimously. We will adjourn the Sheridan Redevelopment Agency meeting at seven twenty-two P M. Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for being here. Appreciate it.